We are in regular session. The Board of Supervisors and the governing body of all other special taxing and assessment districts for which the Board so acts is now meeting. And all those items that are taken at a scheduled time will be taken at that time. All other items can be taken in a sequence for staff and public availability. We'd like to open this portion of our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Community Development Director Heidi Constel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Heidi. Introduction of new employees to the Board.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm very pleased to announce that we have hired a new building inspector. He has replaced Jeff Mitchell, who has returned to his private architecture practice. Today I'm introducing Pat Renaud, and he's started on September 12th.
Fantastic, welcome Pat. That has a community name to it. Born and raised?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Love to hear that.
Thank you.
You got the mic if you want to say anything.
No, okay. My name's Pat Renaud. I was just born and raised here. Left for college, went, came back, and I just look forward to working with the community, just making it safer and better, and just enjoy my job. Work in a great office with some great people, and that's pretty much it. I just look forward to doing my job efficiently and working with the community.
Fantastic, great addition. Love to have local hires.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Patrick Guy, I hope you'll be very busy going into this new year with lots of activity, and appreciate your welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Report of any actions from closed session by County Council.
No reportable actions today.
Okay. Before I ask for deletions, corrections, or additions, there is one item on the consent agenda that I am going to pull, which is Item 4. There's going to be some further discussion about that, and it's a little bit of, I won't call it a circus, but we're caught in between conflicts and government, the Federals and the state and whatnot. So, Item 4 will be pulled for discussion, dealt with separately. Are there any other deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members at this time? Of course, in order to have something brought forth for action, it has to have arisen subsequent to post on the agenda and require action prior to our next meeting. Any such items? No? Okay. Then we will receive brief reports and announcements relative to County of Del Norte, and start with Supervisor Sullivan.
Thank you. I attended the North Deal Meeting, which is the Director's External Advisory Liaison Group with Caltrans. Basically, it's Humboldt County Supervisors, Del Norte County Supervisors, CHP, Caltrans. And it's once a quarter that they have the meeting. Supervisor Hemmingson sat in prior for me at different meetings for this. But that kind of gives us an update on all projects that are happening within District 1, which includes Humboldt and Mendocino County. And obviously Richardson's Grove is still in the process of going, they're still working on it. And then more locally for us in Del Norte County, the project, the Del Norte County Gateway Safety Project, so across from Renner's Patriot Station and Alicia's Custom Coffees, they're in the process. And they are now talking with the business owners to work out some kind of compromise as to some type of, there's a lot of folks that are crossing the highway back and forth, and so there's been fatalities as well as accidents. So, Caltrans is working on a safety project right now. It's ramped it up because there was a fatality that brings it up to a safety issue. So they're reaching out to the business owners now. As we mentioned at the last meeting, that outreach wasn't as good as it should have been. So hopefully they'll come to some kind of conclusion on that. They did, Caltrans and Supervisor McClure might be able to expand a little bit, but they were able to, I believe they were going to do a kind of a show-me trip on the Dr. Fine Bridge, because that is a major bridge that needs to be replaced, and it does fall in the coastal zone. So that's, I think that the, it's approximately $50 million for a replacement, and it does need to, there was an accident a couple of weeks ago. It is a high priority issue to address. 199, 197, we continue to push forward with that. And then I think that was, there was a lot of things, a lot of stuff in Humboldt County that's going on. And then also Last Chance Grade was brought up, and we discussed the climate change meeting they had addressing Last Chance Grade as one of the projects. And I then attended the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority. We adopted a mission statement, short and concise, and got something done in it. Attended a Local Transportation Commission meeting. Also, on a little bit lighter side, but still a serious subject, I was challenged by Jeff Palmer, the Chamber Director, to the ALS Lou Gehrig's Ice Bucket Challenge. And if any of you have Facebook, then it's on there. Myself and Councilman Ron Gasnow both decided that we would challenge both our entire boards as well as staff. So, it's, in fact, we could probably do a raffle to see any of you want to put, be the, you know, the dumpers of the ice buckets on.
Are you going to let us stand in your heated pool like you did?
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, we can do that there. I'm good with that. So, I don't care how heated that pool is, that was still very cold. It was 20 pounds of ice and water, and it just never ended. So I think I ended up freezing because, yeah, literally freezing. So, I did challenge, I am challenging the Board to participate in that, and not only participate in it, but also write a check, because it doesn't really mean as much unless you put some money behind it. I also challenged our CAO Jay Serena, Assistant CAO Neil Lopez, and then two other elected officials. Yeah, I had a pretty long list. Clint Shad from the Otter's Office, and then also Barbara Lopez as the Treasurer-Elect. So hopefully they will participate, get it on film, and get a checkbook out. Also attended the Del Norte Football High School game. Always loved to do that. It was a disappointing turnout, or not turnout, but disappointing outcome of the game. They really, Del Norte played hard, but St. Burns, their quarterback, was really good. So it was, it was, but it's always good to see the community. It's great football weather this time of year, it's incredible to go out and watch. You don't get a bad seat in those stands, so. And then I'm attending the RC, RC Annual Meeting. We're taking off today after the meeting to go to that for a couple of days. On a sadder note, a good friend and a member of the community, John Brunzing, passed this last week, and those of you who knew John, he's going to be greatly missed, and we do wish Patty well going forward, so, and that's it.
Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. The Coastal Commission met in Smith River, which is the second time that they've been to Del Norte County, which is a great, a great thing for us, for them to be able to come and see what we're doing up here and the area. While the Coastal Commission was here, we did do a tour. We toured Pacific shores and looked at the really strong mitigation plan that the Border Coast Authority is proposing for some of the wetland repair. And we also toured the Smith River Rancheria's development, where they're adding some housing for tribal members and elders, and a small commercial development. And we did go to the Dr. Fine Bridge, which was, they actually stopped the traffic and had us on the bridge for a while, talking about the plans. My primary concern was that on the bridge itself, they're talking about not having a safety area to be able to avoid, when you're coming, either turning off onto 197 or onto Lower Lake. I brought that up, and Charlie Fielder, his response was, "Well, it's too expensive." And my response was, "It's a hundred-year project, and people die on that, in that area, and we need to make sure that there's a safety area for people to be able to get off." I also was concerned that they're building it with a piling in the middle of the river instead of having it as a full span. And in Southern California, the California Department of Transportation is replacing bridges on Highway 5, and all of those bridges are free-span to stay out of the water. And they were, they assured me that they could, they could put this in, and they could do it, and protect fish habitat, but I was more concerned about the flooding. Like when '64, we almost lost that bridge because those pilings were in the middle of the river. So to me, I'm asking that they take a look at that. He wasn't real happy about that, because they were real proud of their plan, and the plan is very nice, but I really truly believe that there should be more safety exit. There is going to be bike lanes, which that will be a giant help. So the bridge is still, in my mind, something that hopefully people will take a really close look at on the design of it. Both people that are running for State Assembly and, I mean, State Senate and the Assembly, McGuire and Wood, will both be here on Saturday, on Friday, at Northwoods. And if you're interested, you can look up on their site and find out their times and be able to come and talk with them, because they're going to be here prior to the dedication of the harbor that's going to be happening. The Senior Center, we have a meeting this week, but we had dire news that the county did not receive its CDBG funding, which is the stopgap funding that the Senior Center uses for the food delivery programs and for the meal program that happens every day at the center. So we're going to have to scramble to figure out how to make ends meet. There's a worry that we might possibly have to, for the first time in the history of the Meals on Wheels program, have a waiting list. So it's for the health of our seniors that we need to, as a community, hopefully figure out what kind of food source that we can do, because there's going to be, that's going to be a big hill that we have to climb. Redwood Coast Transit Authority met. We adopted a budget. We did have one piece of news that was very unfortunate. We have a, we have a program that allows people to buy a ticket that will take them to and from Arcata on a round-trip basis for the week, and it's a round-trip ticket that we sell. But the city of Trinidad had made a request that they could buy one-way tickets. And they were planning on buying one-way tickets and giving those one-way tickets to the police, and offering people that they didn't really want to have in Trinidad, a ticket to Crescent City. We said no. We're not going to, we're not going to sell a one-way ticket. But that is a big red flag that we need to make sure that the city of Trinidad doesn't really believe that they should send people to Crescent City, because the police found them to be bothersome in their community. So I'm hoping that maybe we can put that on the agenda, take a look at it, and decide what we need to do, or what legally we can do. The Historical Society met, and we've been given the challenge again to bring back the Brother Jonathan wheel that is in an oyster bar in Portland. And so far, the owners of the wheel aren't willing to give us the wheel back, but we keep reminding them annually that if they were ever to close, we would be glad to take the Brother Jonathan wheel and bring it back to Crescent City. So that's just something that we would like to work on. I have had the good fortune, now that I am retired, to be able to participate at the Endert's Pool. The Crescent City has one of the nicest pools that I've ever seen, and it's just amazing how many people are there, and it seems to be pretty constant. And it's just a beautiful facility. And on my own personal side, I canned 1,000 pounds of tuna, 60 pounds of tomatoes, and I don't know how much relish, so I've been kind of busy the last two weeks.
Thank you Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. I had a staff meeting about the travel management plan. We had some priority roads that we wanted to address, and that's on our agenda for later Also had a Resource Conservation District meeting in Smith River. Most of the discussion was about elk and the grazing leases that Fish and Wildlife has now been readjusting, and they're way behind schedule. And we've already lost one year of grazing, and probably going to be at least another year, maybe more, unless something happens. It's pretty disappointing that locally we had a plan and a lease that worked, but somehow Fish and Wildlife was not happy with the way that it was working in the rest of the state, so they're changing everything. So they want to get back to that one-size-fits-all, which doesn't normally fit us. Had quite a few constituent calls on various things, but I did have one who wanted this Board, wanted me to put on the agenda a discussion about term limits, and not just for Supervisor, but for all elected officials. And it hasn't worked very well, I don't think, for the state. I'm not sure that it would work very well for us. I haven't got enough information yet to come up with a Board report to put that on, but it always seems like, now this was a constituent of mine that called me about the term limits. Wasn't necessarily interested in term limiting me, and always seems like somebody else, somebody that's represented by somebody wants somebody else's representative to be out. And I've always found that strange, that it's, well, it's not my representative, it's that other representative that we don't want there anymore. And so I find it very, very interesting, and I'm certainly looking into it, but I don't think that's, I don't think it's a real option. I mean, if you're looking at getting rid of us that have been on here for more than two terms, it wouldn't take effect for the next, you know, till the next term, so we would be at least another two terms at the very minimum, and probably three terms. So, you know, it just doesn't work very well for me, but I will certainly look into it. Had a local area Formation Commission meeting yesterday. Also had a, I got a text picture of some trash out of Pacific shores of a, from a city council person, who was, kind of sounded like they were upset about this pile of trash that was out of Pacific shores, and wondered if I knew anything about it, which I didn't, but I emailed Dave Mason, and then got an email from Heidi and Dave back, and as it turns out, they're having a little cleanup out there, and that's where they were piling the trash. And supposedly it will be picked up today. So hopefully that's the case, and all will be well. On a sadder note, I went to the Celebration of Life for Walt Coulson, who passed away recently, a long time, Del Norte County name. Worked in the logging industry for many years and had Spotty's Car Wash. So he was a great guy. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you. Well, busy couple of weeks. This Wednesday, after the last Board of Supervisor meeting, our Solid Waste Management Authority did meet, and as Supervisor Sullivan mentioned, we adopted a mission statement. But also discussed was the issue of marine flares. And as you know, they expire after 36 months, they cannot be used, and the appropriate disposal of those flares. There is no economical way to dispose of them, so the Authority is looking into ways in which we can dispose of these marine flares. And hopefully they're not being dumped in the Pacific or through conventional trash disposal, which is not legal, of course. So we'll continue to vet this and let you know appropriately. I was unable to attend a Visitors Bureau meeting due to a conflict in my meeting schedule, but I've come to understand that funding for the Del Norte Humboldt County Film Commission has been abruptly stopped. The cutoff of this valuable funding is an investment into our future, brings media up here, it's our window to the world, and this cutoff of funding is most unfortunate. I was unable to, and several Visitor Bureau Board members were also unable to attend, as was the city representative, so I've asked the Visitor bureaus to please place this back on the agenda for reconsideration. On Friday, September 27th, I participated in a conference in the Community Development Office for review of our current ordinance dealing with panhandling. After receiving a number of complaints from area businesses and citizens on the problems caused by those who beg on our street corners in Del Norte County, the participants in last Friday's meeting, which included our Sheriff's Department, the Highway Patrol, Community Development, and County Council, is examining a recently implemented ordinance in Medford, Oregon, and in Brookings, which essentially cites the driver who hands any object through their window to someone on the street. There's a clear safety issue here, and apparently this is working up there. It's cleared away people who are standing on corners with signs and what have you. Clearly, these folks need help, but I'm not so sure that's the way to do it. So I'll report back to the Board. We're asking for a cost analysis of what it would be, and see if it's appropriate for Board consideration. Last week, we met for our Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, as Supervisor McClure mentioned to you. Normally, this is not a headline gathering group of meetings, but there were another, some other interesting facts that came out. Want to announce that Del Norte County will be part now of the Greyhound Travel Network, which will operate through Redwood Coast Transit. So Greyhound will connect service from Arcata to Crescent City at a very reasonable price. And the importance of this new service connection will impact those who find themselves at the back end of a one-way cal or flight to another far-off hospital with no way to return to Crescent City. And we've received a number of people who've literally been stranded after they've been discharged from Medford or Reading, and they have no way to getting back through transportation. But now that will be mentioned. And of course Supervisor McClure mentioned the Redwood Coast Transit Director Mark Wall reporting that Trinidad is acting in a somewhat unethical manner. It's actually a neighborhood watch group down there, it's not the city, and the city's kind of facilitating that, buying 10 one-way tickets. This is no way to solve a national problem, and I'm hoping that the good folks down in Trinidad will rethink their actions when they try to solve this problem. This past Friday, I visited two schools within District 1. I want to thank Superintendent Don Olson for escorting me into the classrooms at Hamilton and Crescent, Joe Hamilton and Crescent Elk Middle School. At Joe Hamilton, I observed a 5th grade class perform the Pledge of Allegiance as part of the daily education code requirement, 527-20, which requires a daily patriotic exercise which is satisfied by the pledge, and was followed up by a lesson on women's suffrage and the Constitution, which satisfies Ed Code 527-30. I observed similar good academics at Crescent Elk. I was very pleased with my visit. I want to thank Superintendent Olson, and thank Joe Hamilton and Crescent Elk Schools. Next week, I plan to visit Best Maxwell and Del Norte High, also in District 1. Attended a recently postponed North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District meeting scheduled for Weaverville. It was rescheduled and conducted in Eureka. No news to report on air quality, other than we have some fires that are fouling our air. Depending upon where the location is, will impact our environment, and we hope that will clear soon. The same afternoon, I was back at Flynn Center for a 4:00 PM local formation committee, and we did again just barely manage to acquire a three-person forum. I'm concerned about this, because we need city participation, and I've sent a letter to Mayor Holly to make sure that there are city representatives, so we can conduct the business of the LAFCO. Crescent City Safety, jetty safety repairs is in the news. Continuing again this past Saturday, search and rescue coordinator Terry McNamara and his volunteers continued to lay galvanized safety wire along the westerly edge of the jetty and repaint numerical locations along the jetty to facilitate rescue operations for those who trespass and walk on the Army Corps of Engineers' own jetty. The next step will be the implementation of appropriate signage, and the entrance, at the entrance of the jetty, warning visitors and walking upon the jetty is illegal and dangerous. Wednesday marks the Jewish New Year. Jews around the world celebrate New Year on September 25th this year. It's called Rosh Hashanah. It's the year 5775. The high holiday service is called, called 10 days later, Wednesday. I think it's October 4th, as Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. And in light of that, Pastor Bob Wheeler of the Church of the Nazarene contacted me to ask those to offer a prayer request for the hundreds of victims of ISIS, the Christians in the Middle East, whose children are being beheaded by the ISIS vile people who are doing what they're doing. And I asked that a prayer not only go out for these victims and their families, but also to the perpetrators of these vile acts. So I will offer a prayer of Kaddish over the next 10 days during our high holiday period to account for that, to cover that. Today is the first day of autumn, which is equinox, equal day, equal light, everywhere in the world. And Supervisor Sullivan, you mentioned the ice bucket challenge. I need to find someone who'd want to throw some ice over me, and maybe gather a little money for our Daily Bright Program, so maybe some folks can help move that along. I'd be happy to volunteer.
Thank you. I also had a few meetings, so I'll keep it brief. First five, after our last meeting, had a meeting of the Children and Families Commission at Del Norte. Things are looking better than ever. Some of the relationships and the partnerships there, not only with the SEAFR, which is California Family Resource Center Organization. There's a bunch of stuff in the works that I'll keep informed on going forward. We also doubled as a meeting of the Family Resource Center Board, and there's some new partners there that are making the work there even more exciting. Participated in the California State Association of Counties Audit as a member of the Audit Committee. Everything was perfect, which is nice to see, no recommendations. I then traveled to Cal Trust Board. Cal Trust is one of our tools that we use here in the county to invest, that returns a yield higher than a LEAF. There's a short-term and a medium-term investment pool, and now I think their pool has climbed to almost $2 billion. We used to be afraid to invest because the pool wasn't that good, but now it's up to $2 billion, it's doing great. Then I also participated in the CSAC State Association Finance Corporation Board, which I am a member. We talked about a licensing agreement where they would agree to give their nest proceeds to CSAC for use of their, the CSAC name. And they talked about different programs, some of which we are involved in. There is U.S. Communities, which is a purchasing power. I'm going to try to enlighten you a little bit more about some of these programs going forward, because if we use those programs, much like the prescription drug program, it returns money back to the county, which is, excuse me, returns it, if the county uses it, returns it back to the State Association, which helps to lessen the impact on dues. I want to thank the CDD and the Road Department for helping with some striping issues in Klamath, coordinating that. The constituents thanked very much. Apparently there's, we're being inundated, all the Supervisors are, with pictures of blight. Unfortunately, some of the, a great portion of this is on personal property. There is homeless encampments in South Beach area. I know that there's also an area in Klamath. We had issues that, I know, Ed, you helped out with the cleanup. We cleaned, emptied the cans down there every Monday and every Friday, but people that are camping upriver come down and dump garbage, not in the cans, but beside it, and then a bear comes along. So not only do they empty the cans, but they have to pick up the trash. So thank you for all that work. The marine flares, Supervisor Gitlin, thank you for bringing that up, as I asked. They're solid waste. It is hazardous waste, and I sure hope that you can convince solid waste to see the light on that, that they are the entity that should take care of that. Most of them, I think, are stored in people's garages here in town. And then as far as the Film Commission goes, I received that same information. It was the city that chose to not fund it anymore, and I don't believe the county has taken action. And Jay, maybe you can coordinate with our Visitor Bureau Supervisor Gitlin on that. And I don't think we should pay the full bill, but maybe we can leverage some of that. And with that, I'll get a report from the CAO. Jay?
Over the last couple of weeks, as Supervisor McClure brought up, we got the bad news in regards to the Community Development Block Grant funding, and we'll be following up with their staff with kind of an exit interview to find out some more specifics. Basically, they said a lack of funding and a number of applications, and so we'll see exactly what caused us to fall below some of the others, and see if we can make things better. But two of those, Public Services, which is the largest at the Senior Center, being one of those, and CASA being the other, have they been funded for the same programs for multiple years? So we're going to see who we competed with, and it'll be interesting to see what counties and cities receive the funding. Been working on some of the direction from the Board of Supervisors. One of those is the call-out for the animals protocol, and looking into the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, having meetings with multiple members of the public, looking into and finishing the letter to Fish and Wildlife, which I think all the Board members received. Employee evaluations, obviously, doing the working Employee evaluations, obviously, doing the, working with the auditor for a couple of minor changes to the budget, so that's all buttoned up. We had a little flooding issue down at the District Attorney's Office at the courthouse, and Ed has been working on that. It happened on the weekend, and luckily, our DA was going in on the weekend and was able to catch it before it got worse, but it was not good. So we'll be replacing flooring and carpeting down there. Working on the final steps on the ledge platform. Working on the transition on the public defender contract. I think everybody is probably aware, but Leroy Davies has now retired, and you appointed Mr. French to take his place. Leroy, I think, has worked in the public arena for about 25 years, and, you know, Leroy's always entertaining in the sense of he's ready to debate at any given time. And I know that he is, from based on the conversation, he is going home for a while, and he's not going to be doing a lot of that. But his work was appreciated. He is, he's worked hard for the county, and he's done a good job for us. And had a couple of phone calls with the Trinity County CAO and Siskiyou County, and Trinity County is primarily to deal with issues regarding homicides, which we have unfortunately some experience with. So they were calling to get a little advice on how to go through that process. And Siskiyou County is more on Indian gaming.
Thank you. I wanted to mention also that there will be a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. First, it was just going to be to accept a $400,000 check that was received as a grant that will be coming from Oregon, the city of Brookings, actually, to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. So we're going to have a little photo op receiving that check. That's not to be confused with the millions of dollars of grants that were just received and awarded to the Border Coast for construction mitigation, as well as mitigation and actual construction that will take place, and will probably be dealing with that in two weeks, I would think, closer to the first of the month.
Are you guys going to need an alternate on this one? Just start your off, so I can clear my schedule on this.
No, Mike. You can hit the road right after the meeting. No, I invite you.
Oh, okay.
You can photobomb.
Complete tangent, but I did forget to thank Jeff Daniels and the Road Department on, the low divide has gotten bad again. It continues to be an habitual problem every year with that road, and I know the county's put tens of thousands of dollars into maintaining it, and every year, it's the same thing. So hopefully, my successor and the board will continue to make that priority, get that road hopefully permanently fixed at some point. But I want to thank him for going out and grating the roads, so anyway.
Okay, 10:25. We're a little bit behind. We're going to go to public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on any item that is under the purview of the board. If it is something that's on the agenda, I might ask you to wait till it's brought up, but you don't have to. Please stand and be recognized in the public comment.
Look like I drew the Lucky Strawn. I'm the first up. Hi, I'm Charlie Helms, Harbor Master at the port of Crescent City, and I've extended an invitation to the supervisors and many of the staff to attend our Harbor Trail dedication and the extension of the California Coastal Trail. I wanted, if I may, to pass these up here so that you could get, so you could get a preview of the art that we actually have down there. I know the invitation just covered the dedication, but it's really going to be a great day. We've got 15 young people up there that are going to be doing the equivalent of sidewalk art, because we're really touchy about our new sidewalks, so we have art paper for them, and they'll be working on that. They'll be awarded prizes. And we've had 10 artists from everywhere, from Humboldt State to Brookings, and the majority of the folks right here in town decorate anchors for us. And if you haven't seen them, that's what I'm handing you there. You get some pictures of them, and we have them scattered around the harbor so that everybody can take a look. But we just wanted to thank the supervisors and the county for all the support that they've given us in the rebuilding of the harbor, and just want to have a fun time there Saturday. I was told that I have to do an event in September, because if I do it much later, there's a risk of it being rained out. Unfortunately, everything isn't finished yet, but I thought, why wait till next year? We want people to do it, and I've got my fingers crossed that it doesn't rain on Saturday, and we're pretty darn close to being done. And like I said, just wanted to extend an invitation to everybody and thank everyone for all their support in getting everything done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Those anchors are something else. I mean, last time I saw something like that was either bears up in Brookings or the fire hydrants down here in '76. I think it was something one of the centennial.
Yeah, we actually discovered two cases of old Army surplus anchors that apparently had been at the harbor for over 15 years and thought, well, why sell them for scrap? Let's do something fun with it. Let's get everybody in the community involved, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
We'll cross our fingers. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Next, please.
Good morning. I'm Steve Perez, and I'm a resident of Supervisor Sullivan's district and pastor of Huyachi Community Fellowship. Our church is in Mike's district. I just want to begin this way. Mike, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We can never forget or underestimate the value of your service to our district and to the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's hard to realize all that you've accomplished, the contributions and the sacrifices that you've made. But I want you to know that we're a better community because of that, and it needs to be acknowledged publicly. And I'm sure in the days ahead that there'll be others who will come and either publicly or personally say thank you, but I just felt it was absolutely essential that we take this time right now and just acknowledge your years of service for our community, for our district. Really, Mike, thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
To each and every one of you as well. I also want to acknowledge a word of gratitude. The service that you give for our community, for the districts, is invaluable. I've lived here since 1989, and through those years, I've come to learn the value of the wisdom of the people as a whole, in the city, in this county. No matter where I go, I always find interesting conversation, interesting insights being expressed by people. And what I've always found probably most notable is how well these people have a way of selecting their representatives from the various districts, and how well that each and every one of you have brought a voice for the concerns and needs of your constituents. I say all of this, aware that you know this, but sometimes it just needs to be said publicly. It just needs to be acknowledged across the board, the significance that each and every one of you brings to our community. I also want to remind you that the quality of leadership that you bring, how you interact, how you engage with each other, needs to be inspirational to the rest of the community as well. It needs to be a leadership that ministers, that strengthens, and encourages. I know you know those things, but again, sometimes they just need to be said publicly. But from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for service. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Bebe Lenhart. I'm a new resident here in Delnort, and I'm coming before you regarding a couple of concerns as a new resident that I have. One of them, of course, that we've all know about and discussed quite a bit, is regarding the drought. And I understand that there are city lines and county lines, and so I'm approaching the County Board of Supervisors in regard to what is being done on the county portions of the property, both residential and public. In regard to signage, I'm finding very little signage or any kind of promotion for water conservation on what is considered the county portion of Delnort, and not, again, the Crescent City side of the city. The other concern that I have for you is in regard to the elk population. I would like to see Delnort known as an elk-friendly county. I oppose the opinion of this article presenting Dave Lancaster from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife's perspective, that the way to handle elk overpopulation is either through hunting or hazing. I think we are in a more enlightened era, at least I hope we're in the more enlightened era, with organic farming and rights of animals being considered. So for Delnort County, I would like to suggest birth control. Contraception has been used in the Rocky National Park and also in the Wyoming National Elk Refuge. So this is something that I'd like to put before the county, and that is birth control for elk population control. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Any other public comment? All right, then, I'm going to bring it back to, oh, you got one more. I'm sorry.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten, and I'm a citizen. And like Steve Perez, I wanted to come here and commend this whole Board of Supervisors, past, present, and future, keeping our roads safe so that our families can take their children to the dentist and doctors, out of town as they need to, as safely as possible. What I'm wondering is how the board might empower the community more to help on the ground level, since you have such big issues to deal with. I'd like to see a trash abatement program started. Ever since all the signs taken down for speeds that kills, we've had more traffic accidents, and they took down the littering signs in the 70s or 80s, and we have trash everywhere. And like what Steve Perez, I think if we model that somehow, hopefully, the triplicate can present the board and the community today the way it's being presented instead of the way it has in the past. And people will feel that integrity and conceive in their mind on how they can contribute. So I'd like to thank the board very much and this community.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
You got one?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Scott Ratsoff, and I'm the pastor of Lighthouse Community Church out in the Birch Track. For the last 10 years, I and my wife have worked hard and given our lives for this community. We love this community deeply. I'm here to speak just for a little bit regarding the issue of prayer before this board. Apparently, it has become a political hot topic, and I'm sorry to see that. Mr. Finnegan, I'm somewhat disappointed in you and your leadership for not allowing this item to be a part of the agenda. The agenda does not belong to you or any of you members here. It doesn't even belong to me. It belongs to the community at large. In my 10 years or so of ministry here, I have come in contact with a multitude and variety of people. Some are church people. A good portion of them are people that would not even claim to belong to a church or believe in God necessarily, or His Word. But I've yet to meet anyone who, when I asked if I could pray for them, they said no. I think there's something innate in each of us that recognizes that need. Our forefathers founded this country not with the idea of removing God from the public square. And I know that separation of church and state is used nowadays, and it's somewhat of a misapplication. They actually, what they didn't want was a system of government to be politically aligned with any one denomination, such as they had in England with the Church of England, and they had in Germany with the Lutheran Church. But they wanted, and they knew, and they needed the blessings of God. I would hope, and I would pray, that this board would consider putting this on the agenda, reconsider it, put aside your personal feelings, and allow what's best for this community. I can think of no better time now than what the world is going through, what this country is going through, this state, and specifically in Delnort County. So with that said, I will continue to pray for all of you and for this community, which we so deeply love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm the new senior pastor at Lighthouse Community. I would like to affirm everything that he said, and what comes to mind is that we know that this community has serious issues. We know there are people that are knifed out behind Safeway. We know about the drug problem. We know about all kinds of stuff here, including the children's court over there that is overloaded with children coming in. And yet, we seem to think that we don't need prayer, and I disagree 100%. If it has to be non-denominational, so be it. Because you see, in reality, the Bible says that when they, they did not acknowledge God in their hearts, there was no fear of God in them, and because of it, judgment fell. And as I'm sitting here thinking, I'm at the gateway of Sodom of all the problems we have here. But if there were people that stood for God and prayed, the judgment would not have fallen. We're in fear of a huge tsunami, but I believe that God will stop that and will not ever come if the men of God and the children of God, no matter what denomination you are, cry out. And I see a sadness that Trinity is trying to send homeless here. We have enough homeless. I believe in reaching out to homeless people, but there must be a greater thing that we can do, a rehabilitation. There must be some way that we can get people back on track and address their issues. I know we have can, we have feeding programs, but there must be something also to where we can touch the heart of somebody so that they will turn around and they will give up that lifestyle and go back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board then. I want to say one thing. I have never felt my heart touched by the prayers that were offered by the nine or 10 people that showed up at 8:30 to voice to their God their special intentions that I know we were included in. It was the best feeling that has happened in this chamber for some time. It was also communicated by Pastor Steve and some people who spoke after you. It was, it needs to be acknowledged. And for those of you that are not aware, apparently, of the 8:30 agenda item that has been there for over four months, I offer you a personal invitation to join the rest of us, and that's it. I'm not going to politicize it. At this time, we have a 10:30 item, which is to conclude the public hearing and adopt the recommended 2014-2015 fiscal year budget and the special districts budget by resolutions presented over the course of the public hearings. So at this time, I am going, we never closed the hearing, correct?
We opened it.
We opened it. So it is still open. I would begin with a report from admin.
The Board of Supervisors opened the public hearing at the last meeting, and it will be recommended that they close the public hearing and adopt the recommended 2014-15 fiscal year budget and the special district budgets that they're, that they are responsible for. Also adopt Resolution 2014-052. It's a resolution fixing tax rates for fiscal year 2014-15 as required by government code and adopt Resolution 2014-053, setting the appropriation limits for fiscal year 1415. This is the final step in the annual process of establishing a balanced budget. We have, over the last two weeks, it was directed that any questions come to the Auditor Controller or to the CAO regarding the budget. I received none, and I talked to Mr. Shad, and he received none. So at this point, those are the recommendations. There was a change within the last two weeks regarding a fund balance in Health and Human Services, which changes the overall numbers of the budget, but has no material effect on the general fund or any other expenditures. So at this time, that is my recommendation.
So at this time, I would ask members of the public, if you have any comments regarding our final budget recommendations, then I would offer that same to any department heads that feel that your voice was not heard. Then I will bring it back to the board.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board, and especially Jay and Clint and all the staff for working very hard on making sure that we came in on budget and projected forward, especially my staff, Stormy Bruley, and then commanders, both Tim and Bill. Especially my staff, Stormy Bruley and then commanders, both Tim and Bill. Stephen have done an enormous job in maintaining their budgets and making sure that we have going forward. But again, as we go forward into the future, we have some systemic things that we need to look at and address, and hopefully in future budgets, we can, again, raise the limit as far as the number of individuals being held in our jail, and also with the desperate need by many of our community out there for additional patrol personnel. So hopefully, looking forward if our budget picture gets better. But I do know there are challenges, both with the increases in PERS in the upcoming two years that are going to tax not only our community, but so many of the other communities that are struggling with their budgets. But thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Dean. You know, for the last couple of years, the revenue has been off with the jail, and this year, it says it's better with the Shasta County, that it stabilized it a bit. But how are we to know that we're gonna be okay? Because we've seemed to have had quite a shortage in the revenue in the Sheriff's Department, and we've had to backfill with several hundred thousand dollars each year out of the general fund. So are your revenues tight here, or should we adjust going in?
Our revenues projected out this year are good, and they don't, we don't anticipate any change in that formula going forward, as Shasta's position is not gonna change. In fact, they're, you know, they would like to have more room to contract with, because they're desperate for, their jails overcrowded, and I know that that'll continue. And we passed legislation this year to allow that process to continue in the state for at least another three years, going forward to where we can contract with non-contiguous counties for these beds. So we don't anticipate any difficulty in the ongoing revenues. And as you know, you know, our revenue shortage really hit us with AB 109 and the impacts of that when we lost the ICDT program, which generated a little over $700,000 to our, and that impact is what caused us to have to reduce our population and cap and other things, actions that needed to be taken, and going out to Shasta to try to fill some of that shortfall. So, you know, we don't anticipate going forward that our revenues are gonna be challenged. However, we also realize going forward that there are, we have had certain grants that we normally get that are now becoming competitive grants, and the dollars are being reduced statewide. So, you know, we don't anticipate, it's not a significant impact, it's not a major grant to us right now, but it, you know, it's looking at, particularly, drug enforcement is where they're cutting a lot of the funding, and it's going towards programming and towards other issues. But we're losing, on the law enforcement side, we're losing a lot of that enforcement dollars, and that's going to impact the number of personnel that we can support in that effort. But we're looking at other resources going forward and other means to fund some of our programs and add additional programming that we hope will have a positive effect in our communities as far as working with probation and monitoring these AB 109 individuals re-aligned back to our communities.
Thanks. I appreciate you bringing that up, because that really is the key, as we know, to AB 109 and reducing recidivism. It is working with Community Corrections Plan. I know, Lonnie, you have something later on in the agenda regarding a grant. And not Pollyanna, but, and I know that crimes will continue to be committed, but rather than focusing on staffing up the jail, maybe we need to have an equal effort, which I know you were involved in, along with probation, mental health, social services, in providing the services that keep people out of jail, trying to break that cycle. So the devolution of government, I guess, is part of it, isn't it?
Yes.
So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Then I'm gonna go ahead and...
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a recommend, or make a motion to adopt the recommended 2014-15 fiscal year final budget and special districts by resolution as presented over the course of the budget hearings. Adopt Resolution 2014-052 as resolution fixing tax rates for fiscal year 2014-15, as required by government code. Adopt Resolution 2014-053, setting the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2014-15, and approve the addition of the Health and Human Services Director of our Pearson deposition list for the wireless device stipends, as provided in the adopted wireless device policy.
Then I am going to close the public hearing and invite a second to those motions.
Sir.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further comments, discussion? Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. We're now gonna...
Can I make one last statement before we get into this? You know, the process that we just went through is a team effort. It is not always as smooth as we would like it, and all the department heads can attest to that. But I do appreciate the work that they put in, and all of the fiscal people, and, you know, I want to give a thanks to them, as well as to Clint Shad and Neil and Joey. We spend a lot of time on this, as you've pointed out, in regards to the process starting in April and ending now, but we have gotten a little bit better. We're still not great, and as the economy turns around, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to start looking at some of the more discretionary uses, once we get some of the departments a little more healthy.
Thank you.
It is worse, I mean, we've always said it, but you guys do a great job with budget, and it's nice to know there wasn't having to deal with any concessions, no furlough any of those times. And it's, we have a little bit of a reserve, which is kinda almost like finding Bigfoot.
We don't have a reserve. We have a contingency for emergencies.
Contingency, excuse me.
One of our goals is someday to have reserves.
Yeah.
Just couldn't help yourself, could you?
Yeah. Anyway, good job.
Yeah, it is. I'd like to reiterate, on behalf of the board, thank you to all the department heads, especially in a year when we're transitioning with new department heads. Be commended. So thank you very much. With that, we're gonna go ahead and take the consent agenda minus number four, that has been pulled to be dealt with separately.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded on the consent agenda. Any public comment? Back to the board. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Chair Finnegan?
Yes. And again, we'll just wait a second as people exit. I want to thank everybody that did show up. Appreciate it more than I can say. It's just so noticeable, the positive impact versus the other impact. Okay, we're gonna go ahead at this time and take up, oh, we had, as part of that consent agenda, there was a proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Supervisor McClure to read.
Yes, and it's an honor that I read this. This is the Delmore County Board of Supervisors' Proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2014. Whereas domestic violence, once kept a secret among families, is now recognized as a serious crime in our community; and whereas domestic violence has severe consequences for survivors, their children, and families, and impacts on the quality of life of our entire community; and whereas stopping the cycle of this crime requires not only the resolve and the courage of survivors, but also the support and involvement from all of us; and whereas violence in the home is a problem that affects every socio-economic level in our society, occurring in wealthy and disadvantaged neighborhoods, and involving the employed and the unemployed; and whereas domestic violence is generally learned and passed on from one generation to another; and whereas our society pays a high price for domestic violence through homelessness, increased crime rates, drug and alcohol abuse, increased medical expenses, and business losses; and whereas during the month of October, local, state, and national domestic violence agencies will sponsor events to help focus public attention on the problem of domestic violence. Now therefore, the Delmore County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We encourage all residents to dedicate themselves to learning about reducing domestic violence and violence against women in Delmore County. We further encourage all citizens of our community to support Harrington House, a rural human services agency, and the various domestic programs in our county, passed and adopted the 23rd day of September 2014.
On behalf of RHS Harrington House, I wish to thank the board for issuing the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2014. We continue to get support from the community, and we wish to invite all of you to our first October event, which will be October the 2nd, is the Delmore Chamber of Commerce is having a mixer at Harrington House. And if you come, we would be very delighted to have you as our guests. Thank you.
What time is that gonna start? Four, five, 30?
Five o'clock, their Chamber of Commerce are going to start showing up. It's one of the few times that the shelter is open for anyone in the community to come and see. So anyone who wishes to come, please do. We will have a small celebration for those who've come.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna run through a couple of general government things, which is number 10, is to approve and authorize a chair to sign the letter, Six Rivers National Forest, Regarding the Revised of the Top Priorities Identified by Staff as Requested by Community Development Planner. Randy, item 10 on the agenda.
Sure, I can give you a brief rundown of this project. This is, as you're aware, a follow-up. We previously transmitted a letter to the Forest Service, making comments on the proposed travel management plan. Coming out of that meeting with the Forest Service, we met with the new Forest Supervisor, Mer George, and some of the staff that worked on that document. And that was reported out previously by some of the board members. There were some productive, I would say, positive things that came from that meeting, and there were some negative things, too. Obviously, on the positive side, it looks like we may have a productive partnership with the new Forest Supervisor. And on the negative side, our comment letter was very broad, and from the constraints of NEPA and what NEPA allows for in terms of modifying the project at certain stages in the process, they're certainly not gonna be able to take all those comments into consideration. And so what was recommended, or what was requested from the county, was that we narrow down our broader comment letter into basically what are our six highest priorities. And so from that, staff adapted some of those previously identified issues, which primarily consisted of different roads, but there were some motorized trails and some other systems of transportation within the national transportation system, the forest system that we did look at. In terms of developing the priorities, we looked at different things, including historic usage, the current condition of some of the roads, future maintenance responsibilities that could be something to take into account, and also just, you know, achievability. What are we asking for? Are we asking for realistic roads to be kept open? And so those six are presented in your board report and in the proposed letter for the benefit of the public. They include the Cold Spring Mountain Motorized Trail, an OHV loop, and off-highway motorized-vehicle loop in the Upper Coon Mountain area, which is south of French Hill, bridging the gap in the current transportation system roads in the Upper Goose Creek area, looking at improving search and rescue access in the north fork of the Smith River area, also looking at some hunting and recreation opportunities north of the Holiday Mine Road is the fifth priority, and then also, our last priority is looking at promoting access, responsible access, I should say, within the High Plateau area.
Supervisor's comments?
Yes, I do. Randy, I was handed a letter, I don't know if you've seen this, from John Thircock. Have you? You have seen it?
Yep.
Yeah, and this particular road in question was maintained by the Forest Service for a period of 1968 to 2007, and then has been stopped being maintained. So is this in the area which will be ultimately what's called a restored road, but a closed road? This particular road, I think it's the Gasky Toll Road. It's...
Yeah, the road that's referenced in Mr. Thircock's letter is actually the motorized trail that we have as identified priority number one, again, to Cold Spring Mountain. And the access, I believe, is currently open for about half of that trail, but they have it closed for what they've, if you look at the plan, it's not totally clear why they did, but it had to do with Port Orford Cedar Root Rot. And so they have about half of that currently proposed to be kept open as a motorized trail. Our priority would be that that road actually be extended, or that motorized trail be extended all the way to the Cold Spring Mountain campsite. And again, that's priority number one in the recommendation.
Thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say that Randy's put a great effort into this in meeting with public users. Staff has been very supportive in putting this all together, especially you, Randy, and I know Jay, Jay's been involved, and Neil on the field trip, as well as Supervisor Sullivan. It's extremely important that we continue to have our access in the dispersed campsites that have historically been there, in my opinion. And I think you've done a great job in outlining that, so I appreciate all the work of all the staff and participants.
Thank you. Ditto. People have no idea the amount of time and energy that went into this. Some of the supervisors put their toe in the water, some went swimming, and Jerry's still walking on the bottom of the lake. Great, great job. Thank you.
Good job, Randy.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the, authorize the chair to sign the letter. Pull the vote, excuse me, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Number 11 is to request the board to supervise support for the development of a competitive grant program to fund the community recidivism and crime reduction services by composing and submitting a letter to the board and state community corrections, as requested by the chief probation officer. Lonnie?
Morning. I'm actually coming to you as the chair of the Community Corrections Partnership. We were made aware of this grant opportunity through the Board of State and Community Corrections. It's a small amount of money. It's only $10,000 for our county. But essentially, what it is, is it's a competitive grant given to the county and administered by the board, given to nongovernmental agencies or entities in the county that are working in some form or fashion, which we would work out with the grant to provide some sort of recidivism reduction. This covers everything from adults to juvenile services, and it's really how the board would like to structure it in collaboration with the CCP.
I want to commend you for bringing this forward. This is just another tool in the toolbox, and it acknowledges the need for the involvement of partners other than the county employees, or the state employees. So thank you for bringing it forward. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion to...
Second.
Support? Any further comment? Public comment?
If I may.
Yes.
I wanted to thank Jay as well, because he and I, he brought this to me initially. I'd gotten the letter, but we sat down and chatted, and I appreciate the board's support. This'll be kicked off with a letter from you, accompanied by minutes, and we'll work to make this happen.
Fantastic. New blood in partnerships. Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. One more item here is to approve, authorize the chair to sign the letter to the United States EPA and the US Army Corps of Engineers, opposing the proposed rule on waters of the U.S. ID. I'll just say good work before you even start. This is...
Well done.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. In April 2014, there was a proposed rule that was issued by the US EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers to revise the definition of waters of the United States under the Clean Water Act. The purpose of doing this was to respond to three Supreme Court cases that had different, you know, outcomes as far as how waters of the United States were interpreted, and this was supposed to make it, the draft ruling was supposed to make it more effective and easier for people to understand as far as delineating jurisdiction out in the field. What we're hearing from our lobbyists in Washington, DC, from NACO, from RCRC, is that this rulemaking is almost just the opposite. It's actually, it's very confusing. It's 88 pages long, and I believe I submitted the executive summary with the board report, and, you know, I mean, off and on, we deal with these issues all the time in our office, and it was very complicated to me. So one of the primary issues that was raised by all of those groups was the fact that there was a report that was prepared by the EPA that was supposed to be peer-reviewed and before that was finalized, that was supposed to be folded into this rulemaking. That still hasn't happened. So at the conclusion of the... So, at the conclusion of the draft letter that I prepared on your behalf was to request that any decision on the rulemaking be postponed until after, at least 90 days after that report has been reviewed, so people can weigh in on it. On a side note, I'd just also like to say that we also have a bill that was passed by the House on September 11th that is actually an overreach that would, is saying that this legislation is going too far, and they're asking the EPA and the Army Corps to essentially rescind it.
Okay, very good. Public comment?
Good job, Heidi.
Move to approve, the opposition.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, public comment.
Victoria Dickie, I live in the county. Many months ago, we had a gentleman come here named Frank Kelly Grant, who spoke about invoking your rights to coordination, requiring the government and when these statutes were initially propounded, I believe that the water agency that is now in front of you was one of the ones that was called out specifically as being required to coordinate with you. If you invoke those rights, it may be that you can actually have an effect quite quickly because they must, must coordinate with you. So, if it doesn't work for the local, on-the-ground people, we have the right to say, nope, that doesn't coordinate with us. And you can pretty much, it sounds like, almost a veto. So, Mr. Grant has several books out. Many of you may remember when he was here. I would request that you at least go back in your thinking and consider whether or not you want to invoke those rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And I'm going to bring it back to the Board for final comments before vote. Are there any? Okay, just to say that, Heidi, excellent job. It isn't just a boilerplate. We've been fighting this at the NACO, National Association of Counties of State, the Rural Counties, and WIR, and it's been for years. We don't want our mud puddles being...
Waterways.
Yeah, waterways and regulated by the Army Corps of Engineer, which is what would happen. All those in favor of sending the letter of opposition?
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. With that, we're going to go back to a consent agenda item that was pulled. It is number four. And while there is no state or ethical conflict according to state law, it has to do with federal funding, and the federal agency has determined that they consider it a conflict of interest for myself and any other supervisor in this case, Supervisor Hemmingson, to participate, not only at this board level, but at the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority level in any discussion or votes. So, with that, I'm going to recuse myself, assuming that the vice chair is going to do the same. I believe the protocol to turn the meeting over is to...
The admin manual, Alanta, to the most senior-serving supervisor.
Okay, then I'm going to leave the room and the discussion and turn the gavel over to Supervisor McClure.
And I also have to recuse myself.
So, would you like to explain the background, Jay?
Yeah, I'll do a quick overview. Several months ago, the Board of Supervisors, at the request of staff, directed us to go through a Chapter Eight sale or purchase of lots with the tax collector, which we completed. Subsequent to that, the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority submitted a request to purchase those lots as part of the runway safety area project. We have gone through...
Actually, Jay, sorry, can, just a kind of, this is more of a point of clarification on this. Do we have enough to actually vote on this?
Well, I think that after we hear the information, we can probably apply the rule of necessity with the Brown Act and bring back one of the supervisors. But can they be part of the discussion if we do it first?
They should not be part of the discussion.
That's what I thought.
Okay. So, we have completed the purchase of those lots, and like I mentioned, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority made a request to actually purchase those lots. And before you today is the recommendation to approve and authorize the sale of county property to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority in accordance with Government Code 25365 and adopt the resolution of the Delmarque County Board of Supervisors approving the sale of designated real property to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, California Joint Powers Authority. Included in those lots are also lots that were tax-defalted to the county over time or purchased or donated to the county. So, there are a number of lots, I believe it's 75 total, in that request.
Any further discussion? I'll open it up to the public. Is there any public discussion on this matter? I would like to ask Bob Black to explain that there's really only 74 lots.
I'm here to answer any questions you have, starting with this one. The version of the resolution that's in your agenda actually has one extra lot that got in there by accident. For some reason, it's the property of the Smith River Alliance and not the property of the county. So, that lot needs to come out. And then, one of the lots is only owned in 50% interest by the county, and the other 50% is held by the city. The city has, for the first time, received an offer to purchase, and it's my understanding they will probably go forward and sell that 50% as well. So, there's really 74 in it, 73 and a half lots...
Seventy-three and a half.
Before you, for this, for this purpose. And Susan Dougherty is also here, so if you have questions on the administrative level, I think we can respond to everything.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you, Bob.
Yep.
What is the combined aggregate acreage of these 73.5 lots that are currently in question? The second part of that, is there enough aggregate acreage there to accommodate this four-to-one mitigation ratio so that we can move forward on our airport?
So, each lot is a half acre. I don't think there are any exceptions in this batch. There are maybe a few exceptions in Pacific shores, but not very many. Almost all of them were set to exactly half an acre, so whatever that comes out to, 36 and a half.
Somewhere in between 35 and 38 acres.
Yes, and none of these are, there may be random contiguous lots or contingencies, but the, most of them are just scattered throughout Pacific shores. And the, there are several types of mitigation that are included in these lots. Some of them are upland, that is to say, they're basically dry dunes type of property. Some of them are more lowland and have some actual wetland on the property itself. There are different ratios allowed. I can't say lot by lot. We do have that information, but the lots themselves are not sufficient to complete all the mitigation.
Bob, can I just interrupt you as a point of order?
Sure.
That I think that the only item for discussion is the purchase of the property, and the mitigation discussion happens at the Regional Airport Authority Board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions of the Board of Supervisors?
I do have one. I have, the future of the airport is at stake, and I'm going to ask for some latitude on how we address, if you want my vote, on supporting this. I think there's some things that I need to say. Modernizing this 1950s terminal should be a no-brainer, and the FAA has provided funding, and renovations should have happened a long, long time ago. But for reasons that I can't even begin to go into now, these constant obfuscations and delays, one after another, by the Coastal Commission, has put us in this current situation. And this ratio of four-to-one mitigation factor, which I personally seem to think is unreasonable, is a form of state-sponsored extortion. We're losing acreage. We are only 22% owned privately anyway. That number's going to go down now. So, I appreciate the fact that Pacific shores has been blighted over a period of time, but there could have been all kinds of potential to put that particular, these particular parcels in a situation which was generating tax revenue so we could have additional deputies and we can have additional recreational services for our youth. And that will not happen now because these properties, once this vote is taken, will go permanently deeded into non-taxable status, and it's wrong. Now, I'm going to support it, but I'm going to hold my nose while I do so, because there's a greater good here to this community, that we need an airport, a modern airport, we need our runways developed, and we need to make our portal to the world something inviting that people want to come and visit our community rather than what we have right now. So, you have my support on this.
I would move to approve and authorize the sale of county. Are we able to make a motion without the fourth member being here?
No, I think we need to, I think we need to invoke the rule of necessity and ask that, it's my understanding that the rule of necessity is determined by a straw, just drawing the...
Or coin flip.
Coin flip or a draw, drawing of the, so can we invite both supervisors back in and ask them to...
Somebody get a quarter.
Draw a straw or...
We have names in there.
This is because we need, for the audience, this is because this, this resolution requires a four-fifths vote. And so, we can't, we have to have at least the available numbers.
Come on in. When do you guys get a quarter?
Are you going to flip?
What do you want us to do?
Flip a coin.
You're going to draw a name, straws, coin?
A coin.
You got names in there?
We have names in here.
Why don't you just have the CAO pull a name?
Okay, perfect.
Would we be like a member of another... Sure.
You know, it's, have the sheriff do it. The other one you take to lunch.
And the loser is?
So, this is the person that doesn't have to vote.
With that, I will turn this meeting back over to the vice chair.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve and authorize the sale of county property to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority in accordance with Government Code 25365 and adopt a resolution of the Delmarque County Board of Supervisors approving the sale of designated real property to the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, the California Joint Powers Authority.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, and we've already had public comment? Is that correct? Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the Board. Any other comments? Could you pull a vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Okay, and with that, we'll bring the chairman back.
Thank you.
I will email a corrected version of the resolution. It's just one line, really, that's different, so...
Clarification, signatory should be the person that ran the meeting?
I think the way that the resolution reads, it's the chair or the vice chair, so I would recommend Supervisor Hemmingson would be fine, I think.
Very good. Thank you. It's all that worked on that. And with that, drawing towards the end of the agenda, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmarque. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal government. There are several, although they're going to change.
Yeah, there is. And today, we don't have any letters before the Board. Just as an aside, the letter regarding the direction of the Board for Fish and Wildlife was sent out. We will follow up on that, trying to get the parties that are most influential to the table and be able to open that up to public discussion, debate, and solutions.
Thank you. Which brings us to our last item, which is to review, make any necessary amendments, and adopt the 2014-15 county legislative program as presented by the CAO. Jay?
We've been doing this annually at the conclusion of the budget hearings. These are part and parcel because essentially what the Board of Supervisors directs with policy, it reflects many times what we will go after regarding funding and priorities. I've talked with our state advocates as well as our federal advocates, so we've got Vance Goyick and then Peterson Consulting, and they have updated their versions of this. And there aren't too many significant changes, but it reflects what the Board of Supervisors has been working on and as well as a number of issues that are on the horizon and have been on the horizon for a number of years. Obviously, as we go through the year, not, the Board doesn't have to act on every piece of legislation because the ledge platform speaks to that.
Okay. Well, we, you know, going way back when we adopted goals, the idea behind it is to have a, an agenda, to have something to rely on rather than just doing knee-jerk reactions. It also allows us to be better prepared. So, fellow supervisors, you got any changes or amendments? What do you think?
No, I think it's, the other thing, it's important is when we do represent the county in different functions, we're not misrepresenting what the Board stands for because we've all signed up on, on these agreements.
Excellent point. Anybody else? The only thing I'm going to add is that in talks with Diane Cummins, advisor to the Governor through finance, with Michael Cohen, I think I told you at the last meeting, one of the things that we're working on is a rural county grant program, calling it for infrastructure, only for rural counties, but not specifying what infrastructure you had to use it for, whether it was things within the CCP, whether it was for broadband, whether it was for roads, for off-system bridges, family resource, whatever we decided. And so, that, we're trying to make part of the Governor's budget proposal in January, and we will be lobbying for that. I think that is consistent with what we're doing here, and we don't need to put it as one of the things that we're advocating for, but you need to know that I am advocating for that. Okay? Public comment? Dean?
I just wanted to thank both the efforts by the Board, but as well as the efforts by CSAC, our voices, my constant hammering on the, on the Governor's office, as well as BSCC, about the, the funding to small counties, as the share of the AB 109 realignment that was addressed in this latest dollar figure coming to us, the, both the share going to small counties was increased. That will make a difference in, in the services that we can provide and the goals that we need to set going forward and the ability to fulfill some of those object goals. But also this year, the coming year, there was also an augmentation to Delmarque County specifically because of the impacts that we suffered on the initial push forward with AB 109, the loss of the revenue, as well as the fact that we are a special county with special circumstances, that being, you know, that we, that we service a prison. Those, those comments, those direction were heard in the funding realignment and the new formula going forward, and I want to thank the Board and especially CSAC. That vote was unanimous when, when the formula was finally put together, and I know how difficult a time that is to finally get nine different counties with nine different needs, large and small, to come up with a formula that they could all agree to. And I want to thank the Board for, for putting that forward because it will mean a difference to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I appreciate, you know, you and I don't toot our horns every time we walk into the Governor's office, but this is a perfect example of the CSAC relationship with the Governor. Really, the formula was turned over to the CSAC team, and it wasn't a wink and a nod, but it was a genuine relationship building that resulted in an increase of funding to Delmarque County. So, we don't always slap ourselves on the back, but thank you for acknowledging that.
Mr. Chair, I would, do we need a motion to, to adopt the...
Yes, we do.
I will move that we adopt the 2014-15 county legislative platform as presented.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for all who participated here today. Just thank you. See you next time.